I'd like to call the May 3rd, 2016 Longmont City Council's Study Session to Order. Could you please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley, Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with public invited to be heard, and the first person on the list is Hal Morrison. So please come down and state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, esteemed council, staff, and citizens of Longmont. My name is Hal Morrison. I live at 236 Sunset Street for more than half of my life. I was here about two weeks ago. Just wanted to remind you folks that we haven't heard from the staff yet about our concerns on the traffic once the Sunset Street Bridge opens again. We're two weeks closer to the return of a flood of traffic on Sunset, Third, and Francis. But the neighborhood corridors have not been widened, the dog leg has not been taken out, and signage has not shown up. We're concerned. The issue here is apparently due to a lack of foresight. There are really only two true arterials in the city of Longmont. One is Main Street, very packed. The other is Hoover, also very packed. Because of this, people who want to go from one side of town to the other side have to find, or want to find, an easier way to do it. And we are very concerned that once the bridge opens, they will find that way. Even without the bridge open, our neighbors have been continuing to complain to me and to other people in the neighborhood group about the speed that cars tend to go, not all, and some of them are our neighbors that speed, I admit that. We're concerned that once the bridge is open, it'll be worse. The results of diverting traffic onto the Sunset, Third, Francis Street corridor is that people end up, at the end of the day rush, backing up at the stop sign at Sunset and Third. Once that happens, diversion continues to peter out into the neighborhood. Spruce Avenue, very narrow street with parking on it, one lane essentially, and people race down that until they can't go any further as fast as they want to go, and then they turn north through the very, very small neighborhood streets. I live at the corner of Short Place and Sunset. People, rather than wait three cars to get to the stop sign, will divert down Short Place. Oh, by the way, no stop sign at the east end of Short Place, and they don't seem to think that that's a controlled intersection. So they'll just blow right through as somebody who also has diverted down Spruce is coming up. So I'd like to make sure that something happens by the time the bridge opens. We're excited to see it coming in, but we're also concerned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moeen Arink. Do you want to pick the mic up a little higher, please?
All right, I know. All of City Council members, I already know your names, so I'm just going to go right at it. Today, I want to talk about friends that I met ever since I arrived to this city. And that friend is Michael Butler, Chief of Police. I arrived to this city in 2003, and I started working at the gas station somewhere on Hoover. And some police officer showed up. She was trying to investigate some issue that I don't know about. But then we generated a conversation to the point where she later introduced me to Chief Michael Butler. I hope he was sitting there. Yeah, okay. And then, since then, we became friends. It was around Christmas, December, for sure. And then what he did was send police officers with all kind of bags of gifts. And I was living in the in-between, that little house there, and they knocked on the door. It was all cops and blue uniforms. So my first thought was that, am I under arrest now? You know. But no, it was all gifts, good things. And they gave me all these bags, and everything went on from there, ever since 2003 until now. The clothing, most of the clothing that I have right now came from him, Chief Butler. Three bags, three whatever, clothing after I lost everything. I'm connected. I have good hearts. No day goes by without someone, hey, Moore, like that. I told you before. Sometime, I don't even remember where I met them or where we saw each other. All I'm asking is teamwork.
Thank you.
And we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Pedro.
Mayor and City Council, I'm here to speak on Item 4B, Water Services Outside City Limits. I applaud you for considering this ordinance that, one, establishes city council policy prohibiting water leases for oil and gas operations, and, two, limits the lease of water resources that promote urban sprawl that would detrimentally impact the quality of life for Longmont residents. However, I do not believe the proposed ordinance as written clearly accomplishes the second objective. The pertinent section of the proposed ordinance currently reads, "The council presumes that requests for raw water agreements that would provide water to subject political entity or an urbanized area will not clearly benefit the inhabitants of the city. Upon receipt of such requests, staff shall reject the request and shall not process or consider it further unless directed otherwise by city council upon an initial finding by council that the agreement would clearly benefit the inhabitants of the city." I would ask that you add the following to the above. Said finding shall be made by ordinance requiring a two-thirds majority of the city council. By adding these 15 words, you will clarify the meaning by which staff will receive direction and assure inhabitants of the city that future councils understand existing policy and that any change to that policy requires adoption of an ordinance following a public hearing at which residents can assist in determining clear benefit. I believe adding this clarifying sentence and requiring that a two-thirds majority of a future city council be in agreement that there is a clear benefit to the Longmont residents is a no-brainer. The proposed change in no way alters the desired outcomes that the previous city council voted seven to zero to implement. It merely ensures that residents have a defined way of being involved in such a critical decision should it be made. Finally, I encourage the city council to accept the water supply review zone definition proposed by the staff and recommended by the Water Board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Kay Fissinger.
My name is Kay Fissinger, and I reside at 2199 Creekside Drive in Longmont. Yesterday, the Colorado Supreme Court dealt a severe blow to the people of Longmont, indeed, to people all through Colorado. And you should be outraged by that ruling. This fight against fracking and the oil and gas industry generally will never be over until our right to a safe and healthy environment is guaranteed and sacrosanct. Colorado Constitution contains an article that makes the people of Colorado the ultimate legislature. We can amend the Colorado Constitution, and our state Supreme Court will have to honor it. Coloradans resisting extreme energy development, creed, was created last year to do just that. Two of our proposed constitutional amendments are now gathering signatures to petition onto the November ballot. The first is local control of oil and gas development. It allows both municipalities and counties to pass regulations, limits, including moratoria and bans regarding oil and gas development. Mandatory setback for oil and gas development establishes an oil and gas free buffer zone of 2,500 feet, roughly a half a mile, around every home, hospital, and school, as well as sensitive areas like playgrounds and drinking water sources. The Issue Committee is Yes for Health and Safety Over Fracking. Go to the website, yesforhealthandsafety.org, to volunteer and donate. From this, I segue into the main issue of the council meeting, an ordinance for water service and supply. The proposed ordinance is a step in the right direction, but it could be more cognizant of loopholes and of the actions of future councils. The people have unequivocally told you that they do not want to facilitate oil and gas development in Longmont in any way. We now face the possibility of fracking inside Longmont. The prohibition of leasing, selling, and exchange of water used for fracking should be disallowed within Longmont, as well as in the map provided. In '27, the voters overwhelmingly signed a petition to withdraw the Lifebridge annexation. For those properties, if this ordinance cannot prohibit annexation, which I hope it will, then it should specifically state that water will not be provided to them, even should they seek a divorce from Firestone and once again try to annex into Longmont. Water is fungible. The city did not consider this in its 20-year contract with A&W Water. Council was told that the water would be used for agriculture. Agriculture cannot pay the high costs that oil and gas industry will pay. The city of Longmont should renegotiate the contract if at all feasible. In the city of Boulder, two men are now criminally charged. Make sure that that's not necessary in Longmont.
Thank you, Kay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak, council at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close. Public invited to be heard. So now we have a couple proclamations. The first one is a proclamation designating May 2nd through the 8th, 2016, as Public Service Recognition Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week has been set aside since 1985 as a time to better inform residents about the broad variety of services provided by government, and whereas the city of Longmont has a long and proud tradition of providing a wide variety of services to its citizens, including police and fire protection, public works, parks and open space services, planning and development services, community services, municipal courts, and electrical and broadband utilities. And whereas public servants include administrative and internal support personnel, custodians, clerks, fleet and facilities, maintenance workers, accountants, cashiers, and human resource personnel, and they work day in and day out to provide diverse services to residents and to improve and sustain the quality of life for those who live in it, work in it, and visit the city of Longmont. And whereas the tradition of outstanding public service has advanced every day in Longmont by more than 850 full-time and part-time municipal employees and more than 600 temporary employees, and whereas it is important to recognize and salute the outstanding effort Longmont Public Service employees make by dedicating their time, talent, and energy to serving our citizens and by spending much of their free time participating in volunteer work and civic service projects. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Al Coombs, mayor and the City Council of the city of Longmont, do hereby designate the week of May 2nd through the 8th, 2016, as Public Service Recognition Week in Longmont, and urge all citizens to provide a word of encouragement or thanks to any public servant they encounter. So is there anybody from the city you'd like to? Well, I think the...
City manager.
City manager.
Yeah, the city manager. Oh, Kurt's got it. Where's your tie? Hey Kurt, did you get that third one? Did you get the third one? That third one should be great. There you go. The third one.
Next, we have a proclamation designating the week of May 1st through the 7th, 2016, as Longmont Small Business Week in Longmont. And Janine Lanningham, Director of the Local Business and Startup Community, is here to accept the proclamation. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating the week of May 1st through 7th, 2016, as Longmont Small Business Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas because this country's progress in economic prosperity have been largely driven by the 28 million small businesses who create nearly two out of three jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in the United States without discussing ways to support our small businesses. And whereas from the storefront shops that anchor Main Street to the high-tech businesses that keep the United States on a cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstone of our nation's promise. And whereas we support small businesses, jobs are created, and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas Longmont supports and joins in this national effort that the President of the United States has proclaimed National Small Business Week in every year since 1963 to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Al Coombs, mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through 7th, 2016, as Longmont Small Business Week in Longmont, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize and support our small businesses to grow, create jobs, and ensure that our community remains as vibrant tomorrow as it is today. So would you like to come up and make some Thanks for being here.
Mayor and City Council members, I want to thank you for making this proclamation and recognizing our small businesses. As you know, small businesses represent the vast majority of businesses in Longmont. So you're joining the rest of the nation and Colorado in celebrating our small businesses. The SBA Office of Advocacy just released their most recent report on Colorado small businesses. There are 500 and over 532,000 small businesses that represent 97% of Colorado businesses and have created over a million jobs, and our last year created 32,000 net new jobs for the state of Colorado. Small businesses are our economic engine. So again, I thank you for recognizing this week, and I hope you all will go out and tweet as you visit small businesses and use hashtag #DreamSmallBiz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, your first item on your study session agenda is the candidate recommendations, which will be led out by the Municipal Judge Search Committee, and I believe Joanne Zias is present as well, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Good evening. I'm Joanne Zias, and want to introduce the search committee. Judge Mulvihill will be doing your presentation this evening. What he will go over is the three nominees that we are moving forward for your consideration for the municipal judge position and his rationale for those decisions. If you could, I guess, hopefully accept that report and also give some feedback in terms of how you would like to conduct the interviews of those three candidates, then we can move forward and hopefully have a new municipal judge on the seat very quickly. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Thomas Mulvihill. I'm a district judge with the 20th Judicial District. I was the chief judge's designee for the Judicial Appointment Committee. I'm here this evening with the other members, Anton Dwarak and Dan Benavides. On behalf of the Judicial Appointment Committee and pursuant to Longmont City Charter Section 8.5, the following three applicants are nominated for the position of Longmont Municipal Court Judge in alphabetical order: Robert J. Frick, Jordan C. May, and Sanita Sharma. It is with pleasure that the committee makes these nominations. The committee believes that each of these individuals is capable of serving the city of Longmont by efficiently and compassionately applying the Longmont Municipal Code to the cases that come before them. The level of interest and the quality of applicants reminded the committee of the impressive support for justice in the city of Longmont. Thirty-three individuals applied to serve as the Longmont Municipal Court Judge. This was a very strong applicant pool. The committee interviewed the top five applicants on the evenings of April 27 and 28, and then deliberated to decide the three nominees that are submitted for your consideration. In both the application review and the interview process, the committee considered each applicant's education, training, and experience, particularly as it demonstrated the preferred criteria stated in the city's job posting. A minimum of five years of legal practice engaged in direct litigation, such as prosecutor, judge, or defense attorney. Familiarity with the principles of restorative justice and their potential use in courtroom proceedings. Prior supervisory experience. supervisory experience; and demonstrated adherence to city attributes and code of ethics. The committee gave significant weight to certain attributes as follows: each applicant's municipal court experience, which we especially valued past and current work as a municipal judge, because such experience demonstrates that applicant's knowledge, interest in similar work, commitment to justice, familiarity with judicial administration, ability to work in a high-volume environment, and ability to learn and efficiently apply the law. The committee also preferred candidates that demonstrated hands-on litigation experience for similar reasons, and especially because such experience demonstrates the applicant's knowledge of the law and ability to apply the law. Because a municipal court judge must interact with a wide variety of personalities in the parties that appear in court and maintain a judicial demeanor, must work closely with the court staff, and must be willing and able to seek advice from other judicial officers, the committee focused on the temperament of the various candidates, as evidenced through personal knowledge and references, as well as during the interview process. The committee found the three nominees all demonstrated poise, were articulate and compassionate, and responded intelligently and calmly during the pressure of the interview. Ultimately, the Judicial Appointment Committee is confident that we are nominating three individuals who are each eminently qualified to serve the city of Longmont as its municipal court judge. We all thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Longmont.
I personally wanted to thank you and all the committee members for all their hard work. I know you really have done a great job for us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Mayor Combs.
Yeah. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much a question. Joanne, you might want to come back up. So the two recommendations for options are scheduled interviews with the finalists in open session on May 10th, or individual interviews for the finalists in executive session on May 10th. All the three final candidates are good with this date?
Yes, they are.
Kind of like with the appointment of a city manager or city attorney, I think those interviews should be done in executive session, so I would move that we schedule interviews with the finalist candidates in executive session on May 10th.
All right. Councilmember Peck?
Actually, I would like to, I think that we should do it in transparent mode with, in front of council, and not in executive session. I just think it would be, I just believe that it should be more open into what questions are being asked and what's being answered and how the process is being done. It should be done in a public setting, so that's what I would prefer.
So both of those are available options?
Yes.
And the candidates are available both at times?
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. Well, I think it's more like Councilman Santos said, this is a hiring process, and I think that we would get into questions that we wouldn't want to ask in open session, because, I mean, it described the poise and the ability of these people to respond to tough questions, and I think the council needs to have the ability to ask those tough questions in executive session.
Wow. I guess I'm kind of conflicted. I see advantages and disadvantages to both. Basically, all three of these people, at this point, it's public knowledge that they're... Okay. Councilmember Christensen?
I would prefer it to be open, too, because unlike the city manager and the city attorney who serve as staff, the judge actually serves the community at large in a more public way on a daily basis, and I just think it would be helpful to the community for them to... I don't really know what these questions are that we would ask them, that we wouldn't want to have be made public, but my vote would be for an open session.
Okay. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I will be voting in favor of Councilmember Santos's motion. This is a hiring practice. You don't do interviews generally in public. There are questions that we could ask that I think our applicants would be more comfortable answering in private, not just because they can be more candid in a closed group than they can be in an open group. We'd get a better answer in a closed session. I think some sort of public reception so that the community can meet the three candidates would be nice, but I think for the interview process, it should be in executive session, so that's how I'll vote.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. And again, I would agree with both Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Finley. And I would, in a sense, also agree with Councilmember Christensen. However, this is the council's choice. Later on, the public can decide whether or not to retain or not to retain the municipal judge. Again, you know, having interviews and asking questions about, you know, it could be on how someone, how they would rule on a certain case, for instance, you know, that should not be aired for public consumption. That could give anybody any idea about how a judge could potentially rule on any given item that comes before them. I believe the questions we have, and I don't have a set of questions in front of myself either, but the questions that we ask these three finalists should be done in private so we can, as the seven members of council, can make that appointment to the municipal judge. And then later on, I think that's a great idea to have a reception. We had receptions for the city manager and the city attorney when they first came on. I think that would be appropriate. But then again, later on, if no one likes this judge, they can vote that person out. So that's the reasoning for the motion that I made.
Councilmember Beck?
I do like Councilwoman Finley's idea about the reception. That is actually how I met our city manager, and I really liked it because we were able to ask questions, not just to meet them and say, you know, ask personal questions about their lives, but basically interview questions to get to know who they are, and then definitely interview them in executive session if we can have that public part.
Well, after listening to everybody, I'm leaning towards basically having it in executive session because I've never hired anybody that's been a public process. You know, when we hired Harold and when we hired the general manager at Platte River, that was, you know, more or less an executive session. And I guess I agree, you could probably ask more candid questions, and I think everybody would be more comfortable with their, being able to answer. I'm sure these people are all comfortable being in public and out in front of people, and so maybe we're making it's, but, you know, trying to put myself in their shoes, I'd probably feel better being interviewed in a private executive session than in an open public session. I don't know. It's a tough call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Well, I do see Councilman Santos's point is that, you know, this is our responsibility to take care of, and if the public doesn't like them, they can easily get rid of them by voting them out. So, and I do think that Councilwoman Finley's suggestion of a, of a, an open meeting, I mean, you know, a, what?
Reception?
Reception, yes. Reception is a very good idea. Anyway, thank you.
All right. Well, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. And that passes 5 to 1 with Councilmember Bagley absent.
Five to one?
Excuse me, 6 to 1.
Six to...
6 to 0. 6 to 0. It's been a long night. 6 to 0. With Councilmember Bagley absent.
Mayor Combs?
Yes. Councilmember Bagley, I mean Santos?
I'm better looking than Councilmember Bagley. He's got more hair. If we were to do a reception, so I'm assuming that an executive session will be around 5:30, can we get people here at 4:30 for a reception, or can they do that perhaps after the interview?
So after the interview? I do not see a problem with before the interview could be a challenge. I know many of them are still working and do have court cases and dockets, so...
Sure. So if we could arrange a reception for the three finalists after the interviews for the three candidates and, you know...
So that will dovetail into a council session. Is that okay?
We have to have our meeting, so if...
Well, it's going to be cramming a lot in one night.
Well, we don't have to be at the reception. We have met these people. This is for the public to meet the three candidates. So that's why I would definitely recommend doing that, you know, after the interviews start, you know, if we finish by, before 7:00, the public can have a reception up in the mall area, and then we can continue with our meeting.
I'm not sure if it's possible to push maybe executive session a half hour ahead, and we could make 6:30 to 7:00 the reception. I'm not sure if that's possible scheduling-wise.
It's okay.
Yeah, I think so. We can move the executive session up.
Could probably start them at 5:00.
Yeah.
5:00.
Yeah. So are we fine with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, the panel.
Mayor, your next study session item is the provision of water and sewer service and raw water supply outside city limits. I believe this will be led out by Dale Radamaker, General Manager of Public Works and Natural Resources.
Mayor Combs and members of council, I'm Dale Radamaker, General Manager for Public Works and Natural Resources. I'm going to start off the discussion tonight, but then I'm going to have our Water Resources Manager, Ken Busen, step through some of the details of the proposed code changes that we have in front of you. Couple of things I want to point out is that, and as, again, tonight's a study session. It's to have a dialogue with the council and get your feedback and direction before we bring back an ordinance on first reading. Our goal would be to do that yet in May, if we can get clear direction tonight on changes that you want to see made to the draft that's in front of you. The other thing that's in your packet that's a little different than normal is there's two ordinances. One of them is the one that went to Water Board, and then we made some additional changes. It's a sort of a nonstop process with our legal team. The primary change that was made between the Water Board version and the proposed version that's in your packet deals with the provision, or the restriction, or elimination of water to oil and gas. The Water Board version said that it's prohibited and also otherwise directed by council. The version that we have in front of you is that it's just prohibited, which would thereby force you or a future council to actually pass an additional or a new ordinance to do it. In other words, you couldn't just give direction to do it. You'd have to do an ordinance. The other thing is that I believe we would want to clarify and get clear with you on tonight is that historically, for multi-year lease agreements, they've always been done via ordinance. I would suggest that that should always be the case, and if that's not clear in the writing of this particular ordinance, I think it should be and can be made clear, and that would be consistent with the policies that you historically had. And the thing I'll end with is that in my 33 years, we have never had an overextension of the city sort of aggressively out there leasing water to cities around us. We've done a handful of them. They've been of short order. I can think of one that we did with the town of Erie that was for about a five-year term. We do have a handful of long-term water supply agreements that are in place, and staff is also recommending in here is that we would not do any further agreements until this is fully done. And frankly, there's none pending at this point anyway, so wanted to let you know that as well. The other nuance that's in here that I think Ken is going to talk with you about further is that we've defined an area, sort of a no-flow zone is what I call it. I think it's formerly called the water review zone, but that was supposed to be a joke. Anyway, so what we're intending is that any entity that's partially or wholly contained with that is in, if you will, meaning we can't provide water to them. So if any portion of Firestone is in that area, then all of Firestone is in it. Or if any portion of a water district is in it, then the entire water district is off limits for future leasing. We're going to show you the maps of the water districts around us so you can get sort of a geographic understanding of what that looks like, okay? With that, I'm going to turn it over. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I have one question. Would this affect our emergency agreements we have with municipalities and other water special districts?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Santos, that's a good question. It specifically exempts emergency interconnects that you might need to make in, like in the case of the 2013 flood, where we interconnected for a temporary basis with left-hand. And so it would still allow that to happen. Again, you'd have to have a declared emergency to do that under, and it would obviously be for a set duration and purpose.
Right. I just want to, I did read that. I just want to make that very clear.
Right. Okay. Any others?
I'm looking at, well, I'm concerned about the agricultural thing, especially because I think we've all remember that recently, as mentioned by Ms. Fischinger, the two fellows in Boulder County sold, were given agricultural water, which they promptly turned around and sold for much more to the oil and gas industry. You're saying that we cannot prohibit selling water to the oil and gas industry?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Christensen, I'm saying that this ordinance does prohibit us from making sale. And a couple of other things. This year, we have declared no surplus, so we will not be making any agricultural surplus water available. And that's actually okay because it's a great water year. You know, it's been raining lots of snow. And we want to really look at our lease practices. We do that in partnership with the St. Green Left-Hand Water Concerning District. I think it may be wise for us to put clauses in those agreements that say, "You will use this water to irrigate X farm for this year." And I think that might be good language that we look at before we reinstitute that process. I do think it's still the intent that we understand from council to lease water for agriculture. We just want to make sure if we lease it for agriculture, that it goes to agriculture.
Yes, we do. And to preference agriculture, really, because...
Exactly.
That's how we eat. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time tonight. What I'd like to do is go through a little more of the specifics that we'll be talking about tonight. So formed, put together a little bit of agenda to help us through that. As you can imagine, anytime you talk about water, it's not as easy as just saying, "This is what we want to do." You know, water can kind of get its tentacles out there, and so it becomes fairly difficult, actually, to kind of think through this process and make sure that we, A, catch kind of all the, as we've talked tonight, a couple of the side issues, you know. We catch all the, those issues, as well as make sure that what we understand and what we've written down is consistent with what council would like us to do. So I'm going to describe a little bit about the agreement, but mostly would like to walk through a series of questions with city council so that we can make sure we've got the ordinance language correct. We believe we have. We are pretty sure we heard and understood that direction, but we just want to make sure we're... but we just wanna make sure we're right in that. Essentially, what we've done with this ordinance, there's really two areas that you have to cover. And that is both covering treated water, and there are many different ways that can come about. One is just bulk water sales. It's fair to common to pull water out of a fire hydrant and use it for construction or other uses. That's in the first part of your code changes.
Councilmember Santos?
Can we have the conversation in the audience? Please be quiet. I'm getting muffles, I'm sorry, but if you'd like to have a conversation, can you please take it outside? Thank you.
And that's covered in Section 14.04 of our code, which is how we do lease bulk water. And then the second part of the treated water would be, say, tap or selling of treated water, and that's also covered. And then the second half of it is really, which is kind of the meat of what this ordinance is about, is raw water, which I think was really the concern that was brought forward is entering into a situation where we would lease for a period of time some Longmont's raw water. One of the questions I have gotten fairly consistently through this process is, "Well, are you sure you can't sell it? You know, there's, I don't see any language here that prohibits you from selling it." And I would just like to remind the public, point out that for the sale, the actual sale of the underlying water right, that is controlled by our city charter. Our city charter doesn't allow that absent an actual vote of the citizens, so neither city council nor staff could approach that. So that's, so that kind of really breaks the issue between the water right and the actual water that is derived from that water right. So really, what we're talking about is the water itself. That is then how, what we followed up with a new, one of the things we've had in the past is a provision for outside water taps in our code. It's a very, very restrictive, if you go back in Longmont's history, back in the 70s and early 80s, we actually had a complete prohibition of outside water taps, primarily based upon treatment plant capacity. When we built the Wade Gas Water Treatment Plant, we then brought on enough treatment capacity that we started, again, limited outside water tap provisions, very limited. It's only really in kind of emergencies where somebody's lost their well or where there's part of a construction project. It occurs very, very infrequently, and to ensure that it occurs infrequently, we had a provision in the code that basically required staff not to look at outside water taps unless it was a situation like a failing well, unless that water tap first came to city council and council found a benefit, that it clearly benefited the citizens. Then you can just get in the door, and you've still gotta go back through a process of review, Water Board recommendation, and city council approval. So that process has served us well, and when we started thinking about how are we gonna create this language, we decided that really putting it in that section, which is 14.09 of the city code, would be the wisest thing to do, because that process has served us well for between 20 and 30 years, and so that is what we did. Then to do that, we had to kind of work through a number of agreements, kind of functionally, how do we do it? So that's how we came up with this new Section 14.09.030, which kind of covers these raw water agreements outside the city. We then took that to Water Board, and, you know, as you recall, we've discussed this earlier last year, late last year, and then now, and both times, Water Board. One of the issues, one of the things they wanted to make sure we covered was what about the possibility, not really of a water supply lease or water supply agreement, which is what we've all been thinking about, but also the issue of water rights exchanges. And so I'll bring that up here in a little bit, but that, with the caveat from Water Board that they would like to make sure that also is looked at and not forgotten. Water Board then did recommend approval, recommend to city council approval of this language. So one of the first things I'd like to talk about, and I'll go to this next map here to get us going with this language, we created, and it would be in code, what's called the water supply review zone. And the water supply review zone is really the area where the concern is of making sure the water doesn't go and provide service to, you know, entities outside the city of Longmont. There's one thing you have to kind of keep and remember about water, provisional water outside of Longmont. In Longmont, we both control our growth, our urbanization, and we also control our city services, electric, water, sewer. That's not always the case when you get outside the city limits. In fact, many of the areas outside Longmont are served by rural domestic water providers. And so really, when we got into this conversation, we had to look at both, what's happening with the municipalities and that growth that we want to look at, but also what's, how are they served, usually by a rural domestic water provider? And in that case, so we had, you know, we had to really look at both. So we created this water supply reserve zone, review zone, excuse me. Its northern boundary is Highway 66. Its eastern boundary is I-25, Weld County Road 1, basically the east side of Longmont. And on the south side, you'll notice it does go just a little bit further, because it's extended down to Highway 52. One of the things you'll then notice in that water supply reserve zone is that it encompasses the planning areas, not only the eastern planning area of Longmont, but also the planning area of Mead on the north, Firestone in the middle, or Frederick and Firestone in the middle, and then Erie on the south. Each one of those kind of touches that area, so by extending it down to Highway 52, it pretty well encompassed really all the community, those growth areas. One other area that it includes is what has been set up in Weld County, and that, if you can imagine, that's generally the area along St. Rain Creek, going on up to the northeast, and it's called, it used to be called the I-25 MUD area, and now it's called the Weld County Designated Regional Urbanization Area. I don't know where they got that name. And the concern with that is, by their planning policy, it allows urban-level growth in unincorporated Weld County. And that's, you know, that's not really uncommon. You used to see a lot of that in Jefferson County. Probably see a little more of it in Laramore County. See very little of it in Boulder County. But in this particular area, you know, an example of that is the Elm subdivision, the Vista Commercial Business Park on 119, just east of Longmont. So you do see those areas, which we felt, you know, was just as much a concern as some of the growth in some of the other communities' planning areas. So this language specifically, this water supply reserve review area incorporates every one of those and touches every one of those things. And then, secondly, we've written the language that says, "If it's in this water supply review zone, then both inside that zone, but also to the extent it goes outside that zone, it would, the same prohibition of leases would apply." That's primarily because, you know, the thought that, well, yeah, maybe I don't let any water go to this area, but if I let water go in another part of their growth area, don't, doesn't that just displace water that they then can use inside the water supply review zone? So we feel the size of it makes sense. It real clearly identifies that area of concern adjacent to Longmont, but it also encompasses a bigger area. So I guess what we'd like to do tonight is, if I, if you can indulge me, I'll go through a series of questions, and I'd like to just get feedback from council, and then we can come back with the final ordinance with a little bit more confidence that we've hit exactly what you want us to do. And so my first question, I guess, for council would be, looking, after that description and looking at water supply reserve zone, are you comfortable with the aerial extent of that and how that was set up?
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're comfortable with that, thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. So, and then the next item, real similar to that, is we defined in the code, on page three of the proposed code, an urbanized area, which basically is any land in the Weld County Designated Regional Urbanization Area or any other area that the General Manager of Public Works and Natural Resources determines contain an average residential density equal to or greater than 2.5, one dwelling unit per 2.5 acres or 50,000 square feet of gross floor area. That's actually out of our own code, our own planning code. But what this does is it defines, if something's going on out there, you know, we've defined, we've defined some of the municipal city areas, but also if something else happens in the future that, there's nothing we know of, but if something comes up, it gives us kind of that language. So we wanted to make sure that that was a reasonable definition that would help us in the future, if council's okay with that.
Yeah. Have a comment? Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So just to reiterate, you're saying that these urbanized areas will be included in the zone?
That's correct, yeah. If any urbanization outside of the other identified areas, if there's anything else that we don't know about, then we'll catch it with that urbanized area.
Great, thanks.
We don't want any growth out there.
That's right.
Okay, so, great. So then also, I think we've already covered a little bit with the question before, but we have a series of carve-outs for emergency purposes and also for tap trades. As you can imagine, as both as Longmont grows and as other entities grow, you tend to kind of grow over, it's really primarily with the rural domestic water providers. They tended to serve a few, you know, small subdivisions or houses, and then as the city grows out, you end up with rural domestic service inside your city, and then we have a few outside water taps that we don't necessarily want on our system, so. We do a tap trade, and so this excludes that, which we believe is sound business practice. And it also has, you know, some language for emergencies, really narrowly defined. It has to be declared emergency. It can't just be, "Yeah, we think today's an emergency," but.
Well, when you say a declared emergency, I mean, it doesn't have to be a national disaster. An emergency could be that someone's infrastructure, I mean, pipeline broke or something, and they need water, but it's not like a declared national disaster-type emergency, but it's still an emergency to people that don't have water, right?
It would still, I mean, it would still be a declared emergency, so if, for example, a water treatment facility went down and you weren't able to provide water, you would still need to declare an emergency, state of emergency.
Who declares the emergency? The person that needs the water, or you declare it, or how's that declared?
So it's right in the code. It's the city manager and the governor of Colorado.
Okay.
So it's not, yeah, it's just not, anybody can declare emergency.
Just real quick, one thing, looking at that, this is a check with the council. There could also be a disaster, an emergency in one of the districts. And I don't know that this language, is there anything in here that says if there's a disaster in left-hand, I guess they would approach us. Would this allow us to allow that interconnect in that event?
Probably still require the city manager to.
So my guess is, if that works, we'll just check that out with the attorneys and make sure that we don't unintentionally or unintentionally prohibit us being able to assist another entity who's in an emergency.
Yes, okay.
Right.
Councilmember Christianson?
Yeah, regarding that, I'm really concerned about, you know, Colorado has a lot of wildfires, and especially agricultural fires that start up because somebody's trying to clear weeds and things like that. But, and we, it's just very frequent that we have a fire, and we have these intergovernmental agreements, but I don't, you know, they would need water instantly, and so I'm concerned about us not being able to respond instantly to help them out. So I would just like that to be researched so that we are able to actually make really timely agreements with that for fires, thanks.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
So if I can add, so from the emergency piece of this, one of the things we'll just look at is what's required according to the state that we would have to use to declare the emergency in the emergency management terminology, because that would probably answer most of those questions for the water districts. In terms of how fast are the connection and how that would occur, what I think we can give you is an example of when we have the flood and left-hand didn't have water supply, they literally connected, it was hours, they connected from one hydrant to another hydrant, and so it wasn't a long process that they had to go through.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And that, Mayor Coombs, you hit on the question I was gonna ask, who's declared emergency? Is it the declared emergency of the special district or the town or the city, or is it from our city manager? And for clarif, yeah, for all, you know, just a little clarification. My wife works for the left-hand water district, so when the flood occurred, you know, their system completely was destroyed. I mean, their tanks went dry because of the flood. They were able to contact Dale, you know, so is it, again, I guess we really gotta clear that up as far as, is it a declaration of the general manager of the said special district or the town manager, or the mayor, or whoever of the other municipalities within agreement with the city, our city manager?
So it could be a combination of all of the above. So having gone through a water emergency in my past city, we had to declare a state of emergency just like we would for a natural disaster, because what that really means is that you are overtaxed beyond your capability as an organization to respond. And then in order to take advantage of the assistance that you can get at the state and the federal levels, that's the first step in the process. And so what normally comes along with that is that you lose pressures. You have to issue boil water notices. There are a lot of things that start happening that trigger that state of emergency. If they're in that type of situation for an extended period of time, they're gonna need to do that to get the other assistance that's available.
Yeah, and it's just, and it's my hope that we continue to help when others need help, just in case, heaven forbid, the day comes where we need it.
You know, I think we developed such great relationships working with all the communities around us during the flood. We might as well have that spirit of, you know, helping each other out, having each other's back during this thing, so.
Okay, great, that's good feedback, because we can, we'll look at that emergency language, make sure we cover those instances. Probably the next thing I want to make sure that the city council's kind of aware of, we talked a little bit early about how if something's in the water supply review zone, then we don't provide water outside of that. That's, it's one thing to say that, it's another to actually understand that. And so the next thing we put in here is a map that shows the four adjacent rural domestic water systems around Longmont. And if you look down on the southwest part of this, the red is the left-hand water district. On the blue, on the east, which is basically east of I-25, is the central Weld Water District. And that's a really big water district. The bottom end of that goes almost down to E-470. The top end of it turns at Greeley, on the south side of Greeley goes out past Kersey, partway to Wiggins. partway to Wiggins. Medially north of us, in a very small district, is the Longspeak Water District, that's immediately north of Longmont. And then north of that is the Little Thompson Water District. And the Little Thompson Water District goes to the east, it goes clear to the South Platte River. To the north, it goes to Loveland, but to the northwest, it goes up the west side of Loveland, goes all the way up the canyon, past Masonville to the Arkans area. So you're really west of Fort Collins. So, if you literally read this lang, you know, interpret this language, it's an area from north of Denver to west of Fort Collins to way east of Greeley. So we wanted to highlight that and make sure that that is what city council intended. And I guess this is probably one, it's a little bit harder to wrestle with to think about, you know, because again, you have that problem, well, if you provide water, you know, there's two sides of that question. If you provide water, if you do allow water to go into a part of the district well, well, well away from Longmont, does that allow any additional water then to be available more locally? On the other hand, it probably extends way outside of Longmont, maybe much more than council was thinking, a greater aerial extent than we really want to be involved in or want to be. So, that's really a tough one. We've, of course, erred on the side of, I'll say inclusive, we've included it all. You know, we've interpreted this to say, yeah, those water districts are serving planting areas that are in that water supply reserve zone, so, you know, it's all off limits. So, I just wanted to highlight, we wanted to highlight that and see if council had any input or thoughts, or would like to, you know, have additional information when we come back with ordinance on this.
Well, one thing that I think of is, what if we have, we're flushed with water, and we have this valuable asset that we want to lease to farmers way out here in the northeast... Yeah. Okay, so we're free to do that, no matter what. Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, the leasing to agriculture, as I was saying earlier, is intended to continue once we have a chance to make sure that our lease agreements are tight enough to prevent unintended uses of the water that we've been hearing about with some other folks.
Yeah. But what if there's, like, new developments or new cities or new towns out here that aren't going to compete against our sales tax dollars, but they need water and we have extra water that, you know, we could benefit our citizens by leasing to those towns in the future?
What I would say to that, Mayor, is that, you know, this, you're passing this as an ordinance. It's a, it really does complement, as I mentioned, historically, we haven't been in the practice of doing this, so you could make this all of eastern Colorado, and it wouldn't be any different than what we've done over the last thirty-some years. So, if that were to happen, and if the council at the time was able to say, boy, that really clearly benefits the city of Longmont in some way, and make that case, then I would say you would look at this ordinance at that time and use the wisdom of the day and decide whether or not to amend it.
Okay. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that what the mayor was suggesting would be a long-term agreement, and at this point in time, I would not be in favor of long-term agreements, because at some point in time, we could be running up short of water, and we're obligated to lease water on those other agreements. So if you have a city or town, they're going to need water forever, and they're not going to count on year-to-year leases for their water supply. So, I think that that also is another thing that would help protect us. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Wouldn't this also come under having to go to a vote? Would this be selling water shares?
No.
No, it would just be water rights leasing. Okay.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, because, no, yeah, it would definitely be a lease. And getting back to the bad actors that were in Boulder County doing that, again, we can enact everything we potentially can. I would hope that people would follow our ordinances, but if not, then they need to be prosecuted with the list under the law.
Okay. Good.
Councilmember Christensen?
I have a strange little question. I noticed that a big section of Longmont doesn't have any, and up into Lyons, doesn't have any indication of anything. Do you know what I mean, up in the northern part of Longmont and up into Lyons?
Yes. This map just shows the rural domestic, so the Longmont part is served by Longmont, as is Lyons by the town Lyons.
Okay.
So, the next kind of area that we wanted to talk a little bit about is the language, the agreements that this language covers. Longmont really has two separate types of water supply agreements. One, we call a short-term agreement, that's, you know, less than one year. And then a second time, that's a long-term agreement. A short-term agreement doesn't require formal council action, but a long-term agreement, because it's leasing water, even before this, required formal council action. We would come, if it was more than a year, we had to, we brought an ordinance, we brought the agreement, and it was approved by city council in the form of an ordinance, so that's already policy. This language was written to cover long-term agreements, because that's really the only agreement that would be of any benefit to somebody. You're not going to build a house with a six-month agreement. You wouldn't even get the house built. But, so a short-term agreement, the language remains the same. We wanted to make sure council was aware of how we wrote that, that that's, we felt that's reasonable. It allows us a little more flexibility. We certainly do have the prohibition for oil and gas. It's irrespective of the type of agreement, so that can't happen in any situation. But the short-term agreements are used quite often for exchanging water back and forth. Actually benefits us probably as much as does anybody else, but wanted to make sure council was aware that, you know, we want to be clear on that, make sure everybody's okay with that. And then finally, in the ordinance, and really in, mostly in the form of an exclusion for existing agreements, we are trying to cover many of the agreements we have for, maybe we'll call them non-city entities. We have an, this, this language allows an exception to the policy for existing agreements. We have one agreement with the St. Rain School District. We do provide, and it's surplus water only, so it's not, you know, we don't have to provide it if we ever run short on water. But it's surplus, the first 1,000 acre feet of surplus water, up to 1,000, that actually the school district doesn't use that much, but we lease that to the school district. And the school district does have Meade High School, which is in the water supply review zone. So, they actually, they don't use much, but they lease a little bit of CBT water from Longmont that they then put down the irrigation ditches and irrigate their sports fields and the grounds around their schools. We feel that's reasonable. They also, a little bit of the CBT water, they transfer to the Little Thompson Water District, who treats it for them and then delivers it to them, so that they can have a lower treated water rate on some of their schools that don't have raw water. So, that's a long-term practice that, you know, really doesn't, isn't going to impact, we don't believe impacts, growth in the area. We also have some agreements with the St. Rain and Left Hand Water Conservancy District. As a water conservancy district, they actually encompass all of the St. Rain Creek and Left Hand Creek basins, so they go clear out to the South Platte, right through the heart of the, of the water supply reserve zone. They don't provide, again, they don't provide any raw water to, or water, to any of the growth areas. They do operate a augmentation plan, and that augmentation plan, primarily it's west of us, it's more up in the mountains where somebody has a cabin up there and they pull some water to put it in there out of the creek to water their yard or in their cabin. That technically is, you know, violation of water law if you're not in priority, so then the district augments that out-of-priority depletion. There's a number, number of those wells around in the district. They are developing their own water supply. They actually had developed enough water supply to fully operate that plan before the flood, but the flood took out what's called Lake Four, one of the gravel pits west of Hygiene, was their primary water supply for that plan, took it out, and they're still in the process of rebuilding that. So they're probably another year or two away from being able to have that back and fully functional. We also have an agreement with the St. Rain State Park. St. Rain State Park is right in the heart of the water supply reserve zone. St. Rain State Park, obviously owned by the state of Colorado. We have, we have, in the past have had different arrangements with the state of Colorado. We do have a permanent exchange agreement with the St. Rain State Park. They acquired 300 acre feet of native basin water that they dedicated to the city Longmont, and in exchange, we provide them 300 acre feet of effluent out of our wastewater plant. So it's, it was, you know, an extremely good trade for both of us. It got water right, right above the state park where they needed it for operation of the state park, and it provides us 300 acre feet at no cost of additional water. So that works well. We also, over, at various times over the years, have done some arrangements where we could get in-stream flow, especially through our Greenway through Longmont, and we have to do that with the state. We can't, we can't do an in-stream flow. Only the state can do an in-stream flow, and only the state can protect an in-stream flow. So, this, this language kind of allows those type of activities to continue. So, wanted to make sure council was comfortable with those type of existing agreements and arrangements that we have. And then probably the final issue I wanted to bring up today was the issue of exchanges, and this is really kind of the issue that the water board asked us to auger down into. And that is the issue of exchanges and the use of non-historical water out of the water supply review zone. So, an exchange of water rights could involve a situation where one of the entities, so one way, you know, one way, it's clearly in the agreement here, one way you could get water in this water supply review zone area would be, you know, just doing a water supply agreement with Longmont. Another way you could do it is to purchase water rights, native basin water rights that exist in the basin that Longmont otherwise accepts for use in our system. But for most of these entities, they can't use, essentially most of these, if you can, most of these rural domestic water suppliers can only use CBT water. That's because the water treatment plant for Longspeak, Little Thompson, and Central Weld is up at Carter Lake, right below the reservoir. It's a plant that's, a combined plant owned by all of them, run as the enterprise, and so the only water they can get into that plant is Carter Lake, water out of Carter Lake, CBT, or Windy Gap. So, they would have to do an exchange. Water Board felt that's kind of about the same as doing a water supply agreement. If we, you know, if we allowed them to get some water and exchange it to us, the difference is, of course, is if we exchanged it, then we would have that native basin water right. So, it could be felt a little advantageous. But Water Board was concerned about that, and last fall, when we were talking with city council, Mr. Councilmember Bagley's specific recommendation was to come back with language that covered that exchange potential. And so in this language tonight, we have some language covering an exchange. And so we wanted to be clear that in addition to the agreements, also those exchanges are covered. The one thing we don't have in here is the non-historical water rights. It's probably even a tougher issue to trace down. If we want to cover that, we'll actually have to go into our raw water requirement policy and bring back additional language that covers that. So here's the issue with non-historical water. Longmont allows, in very limited situations, water that is not historical to the Longmont growth area to be dedicated instead of cash and, you really, you'd have to dedicate all your historical water that's on the land that you annex, and then later on, when you plat and develop, you have to meet a full three acre feet per acre. To do that, developers have two choices. They can pay us cash and lieu of water rights, or they can go out and buy non-historical water rights. And in our code, we have certain non-historical water rights that you can dedicate. One of those water rights is the oligarchy ditch, oligarchy ditch going through Longmont, but as it goes around and east of Longmont, it becomes the lower oligarchy ditch, east of Weld County Road One, goes around Union Reservoir, and goes out into the water supply review zone. Those, there's not a huge amount, but there is definitely water shares, oligarchy water shares, on the properties in the water supply reserve zone. So what, as those properties develop, of course, the landowners can't use that water to dedicate to any one of those water districts or to any of the towns, because they don't treat that water, they can't, they can't get in their system. So essentially, it becomes surplus. One of the things they do is they put in some, some raw water irrigation systems in their, in their developments, and so they're able to use a little bit of the water historically on the land, but there's always more, well more water than they need to even do that. So then they, they're kind of, there's some water that's kind of orphaned out there, so to speak. In the past, we have accepted some of that water, specifically, you know, over the last 20 years, we accepted a little off the Vista Commercial Park, and then I think a little bit off of Firelight and a couple other small areas like that. But there's still some more water out there. So, our concern, just to be completely transparent, is if we allow that to come in as non-historical water, essentially what happens is, a developer in Longmont will go out and buy that water from that property owner, give them cash, and then we'll end up with that water. Then that, of course, that person may put the cash in the pocket and go on a trip, but more than likely, they're going to take that cash and then convert it into CBT water, which they can use. So in a, if you think of that circular route, you can actually end up with, by us accepting that non-historical water, we could end up allowing a little bit more water to actually end up going to that area. That's kind of the downside of accepting that, or the upside, you know, what we want to prevent. The downside is if we don't accept it, we end up stranding that water out on some of these far ends of these ditches, and we end up having higher costs, kind of in perpetuity, for Longmont water customers who have to pay to maintain that ditch going out to those properties. So there, this is not, this is not a real easy answer question, and it's not, it's not in the ordinance, so we don't have to act, you know, worry about it right now, but if it's an issue you would like Water Board to further explore, or if you'd like us to come back with language, we'd certainly want to have that conversation, just to make sure... That's the last area we think we need to cover, to be sure, so.
If I could jump in real quick, too. I think Ken's done a really good job of explaining it, but let me do just a real quick. I'm sort of a simple-minded guy. So it's a case where I own oligarchy water. The mayor has land in Longmont that he wants to develop. I can't use my oligarchy water out in the water review zone, and so you come and buy it from me, because you know that Longmont will accept it for your development in Longmont. You then take the cash and buy CBT and still allow development in whatever community or municipality you might be in out in this area. And so the way to think of this is it's an indirect way of your water policies supporting development in this area. That's how I think of it, is that it's not a direct thing, so it's not directly us sending water out, but indirectly... So it's not directly us sending water out, but indirectly, because of our water policy, you are supporting development in that area because it provides them the financial resources in the form of the cash to go and purchase primarily CBT. And I think Ken also did touch on it. Some of the developments out there are putting in dual systems for irrigation purposes. And so it's not as though they don't have any use for the water. My guess is the highest value, the highest price they can drive is to sell it to a developer here in town that will then bring it to satisfy nonhistoric. And so the question is, do you want to also not use the water utility to indirectly promote or allow development and water development to occur east of you?
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
So I think this warrants further study to understand it more. I mean, you went through it pretty quick and there's a lot of detail that's probably still left to be determined. And I'd like to see more work done at it. Water Board's probably the place to do that. How much water are we talking about?
Maybe a couple hundred acre feet type. It's not a lot, but it's still.
Yeah.
Okay. Something we wanted to.
Yeah, I, I just think it'd be worth further reviewed. And does it have to go in, does that particular language, if we change our policy today, have to go into this ordinance? Or is it another section? Add it later?
We'd actually add it later in the raw water requirement policy. It wouldn't be part of this. So yeah, it would, it would, however we do it, it would still be separate.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Councilmember Moore was going to ask, said the same thing I was going to say. So yeah, definitely have Water Board come back. Everything else I'm, I'm okay with, just that that one piece needs to be tightened up. So we're not indirectly supporting development with the water utility. But again, I, I would allow that, the, the Water Board some time to study it and give us a really good recommendation.
Well, if I understood it right, the pros and cons were, yes, it might indirectly help someone downstream from us, you know, develop, but it also could have a small effect at lowering rates for our own customers or?
I think the reality is on the, if you use the oligarchy as an example, the Elms development is always going to be there. And they've got their oligarchy. So there's going to be water delivered out in that area. The, it really, to me, comes back to, and we're going to maintain the oligarchy ditch in any event because it's a storm drainage and it's the major ditch to fill Union Reservoir. So I'm not overly concerned about that. I think it does really come down, it boils down to direct or indirect assistance. And I, I like the idea of the Water Board and staff for evaluating that, and we'll bring that back to you.
With evaluation, with the pros and cons of.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Councilmember Christensen?
Well, I, I agree with both Councilman, Councilman Santos and Councilman Moore. This is really a very complicated thing. And I think really our, our intent is not to encourage development out there, whether it's directly or indirectly. But it is a, you know, it's a very complicated thing of how we could phrase this and how we could actually make sure it doesn't impact our water rates any more than they've already been impacted. So yeah, I would like to see it many more, you know, much more discussion about this at a later date. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As far as amending this ordinance in the future, especially for the water supplies review zone, I like the idea that Mr. Pedro suggested of having a twenty, two-thirds majority vote by council in order to amend this ordinance. I would like to see that language in here.
I guess on the surface, that kind of made some sense to me. I'm not sure without sitting down and talking with the lawyers and the details of it, but I kind of like the concept that Gordon was proposing. Councilmember Finley?
Didn't you say that it wouldn't be allowed at all and it would have to come, it would have to be an additional ordinance in order for us to look at it? Or did I misunderstand?
It does take an additional ordinance. And, and I wasn't in the chambers when Gordon was speaking, but I, I believe what he's looking for is a supermajority, which is similar to what you have to have when you pass an administrative ordinance to sell property. You also need to have a supermajority, which essentially means instead of four, you have to have five. And so if the council is, is comfortable with that, we can certainly, not being an attorney, but I, I believe we can come back with an ordinance that has that stipulation in it.
Councilmember Christensen?
I do feel like that suggestion is a very good idea because water rights are so critical to our town's future and it's something we would like to, you know, it, it's on a par with, with public land, selling public land. And the ordinance, the suggestion was also to have it require a public hearing, not be an executive session. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Well, any ordinance has a public hearing. It won't be done in executive session. You know, add on as much stuff as you would like. The, the problem is, is that knowing how the process works is first reading, second reading, a public hearing. It's not like we, you know, go in back doors to make deals or anything of that nature. So it's, the, the suggestion is very superfluous, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I would support the two-thirds majority, but we need to bring her back and hopefully Councilman Bagley will be here.
Okay.
So if you'll indulge me just to kind of wrap up here, there's, there's a couple things on this. One last thing I wanted to highlight is, is in the, in the language, there's now a requirement that we do some tracking of the water to make sure it doesn't go to oil and gas, which is, which is great. But to do that, we actually have to set all that process up. So just wanted to let everybody clear, we won't be doing any short or long-term agreements for however long it takes us to get that done. And I would estimate probably six months or so to get all that in place to make sure we're, we're good. So probably not a problem. We don't have any agreements anybody's asking for right now anyway. So wanted to let you know that. I just wanted to highlight, this, this language just does, it covers oil and gas, there'll be no oil and gas, treated or untreated, anywhere, and any, and no, nothing in the water supply reserve zone. So we will make these last changes to the ordinance, and our, in, our hope and intent is to bring it back at the second studies, second regular meeting, I think it was May 24th, and then the second reading will be the first meeting in June. So we should have this in place fairly soon.
Awesome. Thank you.
You guys want to take a break or do one more session?
Yeah, let's take a, a five-minute break and while David's getting set up.
Mayor David Starnes, our Executive Director of the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority is here to present the Lura 2015 Annual Report.
Wow, that grass looks just like the grass in my backyard.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, David Starnes. So tonight I'm here to provide an update on the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority activities in 2015. You should have received a copy of the annual report. And it really highlights what's going on in Longmont. I love this picture here of the kids in front of Village of the Peaks because it really kind of speaks to the evolving nature of retail centers and their need to adapt to emerging demographics and economic and market trends to stay relevant in today's marketplace. It's competitive market in retail, a lot of retailers are having to think differently. And the developer of our Village of the Peaks is providing an example here of using, you know, a third space in terms of a gathering place for kids to play karate. So with that, so I just have a quick opening thought. A lot of urban renewal projects are public-private partnerships, and I want to kind of quote a book from Urban Land Institute called "The Ten Principles for Successful Public-Private Partnerships." And one of their key statements is that all successful PPPs projects start with a vision. Without a vision, the project will most likely fail. The vision is the framework for project goals and serves as the benchmark to ensure the realization of joint objectives. And I think in Longmont, we do a great job of providing that vision, whether it's through our two urban renewal plans, the Twin Peaks Mall or the Southeast Longmont, whether it's through the First and Main Transit Revitalization Plan, which is laying the framework for reinvestment down at First and Main, or even for Envision Longmont, which is our citywide plan of how we envision the community building out over the next 25 years with, you know, limited expansion exteriorly, but more looking at infill and redevelopment where urban renewal plays a key role. So just kind of quickly highlight, you know, urban renewal has been around in Colorado for a long time. It's one of the primary tools that helps to frankly ameliorate kind of blading conditions, properties that have gone into disrepair. One of the key attributes of urban renewal is the use of tax increment financing. And really, it allows the development to pay its own way by capturing that increase in tax generated by the new development to go back and be reinvested to eligible public improvements. Obviously, it improves the area's attractiveness by eliminating blading conditions, whether it's knocking down an old mall or old turkey factory. Urban renewal can play a key role in ameliorating those blading conditions. It also helps level the playing field in areas that really have a high cost of entry, whether it's properties that are contaminated or properties that have lack of infrastructure. Oftentimes, these properties don't capture the attention of developers because of these challenges, where there's a huge sunk cost upfront to get a property going to be redeveloped. And urban renewal helps level that playing field by providing financing to help make it attractive to invest in areas that typically frankly may be easier to build on a greenfield site. These infill sites are often complex, they have challenging factors that make it very difficult to redevelop. And finally, it helps retain and improve economic prosperity. You know, obviously, when you redevelop in urban renewal areas, you create jobs, you also create new housing, you also create new commercial space that typically, as I mentioned before, may have suffered a lack of investment and are challenging areas of the community. So I'm going to kind of highlight the two urban areas in the city. One is obviously our Twin Peaks Mall area, we should probably rename that because the mall's not here anymore. But it was the urban renewal plan was established back in 2009. It's a large area, about 175 acres. It's about 49 different separate parcels. The plan was updated in 2012 to authorize use of TIF within a portion of the area where the mall is. And that really jump-started the redevelopment of Village of the Peaks. The zoning is split pretty much half-commercial-regional where the commercial centers are. That's where the old former Walmart property and the mall is zoned commercial-regional. And the eastern side is mixed-industrial zoning. So just kind of, again, I'm a big fan of nice pictures really to showcase what's going on and what we're doing. Obviously, in 2015, we saw construction at Village of the Peaks continue. Eight new businesses opened, and this includes Regal Cinemas, T-Mobile, Samuel's Jewelers, Gold's Gym opened, Sports Authority, Wyatt's Wine and Spirits, Chuck and Don's Pet Supplies, and Party City. And since that time, since we're now in April, there have been a variety of other stores that have opened there. But this is basically in 2015, we had eight new businesses open. Just some renderings here, not renderings, pictures of actual the project and the construction. You have Wyatt's, you have Bad Daddy's Burgers with the field in front of it. You have a fire pit, and you have Whole Foods, which was constructed as well. And it's slated to be opened later this year. One of the key features of Village of the Peaks is the focus on third places. You know, really highly amenitized development that has lots of different things for people to do in addition to shopping. You have water features, you have live music, you have multipurpose space. You also have kids' areas, you know, places for people to hang out, kids to play, parents and teenagers to shop. Quick snapshot on the numbers. So the Twin Peaks Mall is the only urban renewal area in the city of the two that has an active TIF district. And so when we look at the 2015 market values, within the tax increment area, which is basically where the mall used to be and where Village of the Peaks now stands, that market value, according to Boulder County, was about 29.2 million, which has an assessed value of 8.5 million. The tax billed in 2016, because we're basically, for values established in 2015, is taxes paid in 2016. That value is around 737,000. That will be coming to the various taxing entities, and this is part of the base, but we haven't reached the increment point yet, to which the funds will go back to reinvest in the project. In terms of retail sales, our 2015 retail sales, most of the project opened in the fourth quarter of 2014, so there wasn't a lot of retail sales. It totaled about 2.7 million, and the city portion of that, the 3.275%, is about 89,000 tax revenue. As you can see in the bottom there, the note, the TIF-based city sales tax is about 723,000 at 3.275%. So moving on into our second urban area, and this is the Southeast Longmont urban area. And so this is a very large area. It was adopted back in 2006. The thing that's important to note is this urban area does not have an active TIF district. So one of the major frankly teeth of urban renewal is not in place at this time, which frankly has been probably a good thing because, given the statutory limitations of TIF, 25 years, we'd be 10 years in, we would have eaten up 10 years without a project to kind of show forward. And one of the things that you use TIF is to facilitate a redevelopment project. I kind of broke it up into three kind of circle areas, I guess you would say. It's about 566 acres. On the western side is frankly the area that's our First and Main TOD. A portion of our urban area here overlaps with the DDA, which has an existing TIF in place. To the far east is our Sugar Mill, which is another obviously blighted vacant property that's in need of reinvestment. It's also in the urban renewal area. In the middle, frankly, it's mostly the city-owned property. This includes our wastewater treatment plant, it also includes the Dickens Farm Park. You know, these won't be taxable entities, but these are, particularly the District Park is clearly an amenity for this area in terms of reinvestment, and the wastewater obviously plays an important citywide goal of providing wastewater for the city and residents. So in terms of highlights in 2015, here's, this is kind of focusing on the First and Main area. This is a rendering that was done from the consultant back in 2012 for our First and Main Transit Revitalization Plan. And as you can see, there's a lot going on that we've done since 2015. And particularly around Butterball, you can see South Main Station there is at First and Main. We have Whippy Brewing, we have a proposed co-working space in the old granary building that's being planned for the area. In terms of infrastructure improvements, we have a new Boston Avenue connection between Main and Martin that's slated to begin construction this year. And we have a new District Park that's in planning as well, as well as a new Main Street Bridge that's slated to be constructed this year as well. So just in terms of highlights, so in 2015, as part of the effort to facilitate redevelopment of the old Butterball Plant, we entered in the city and the DDA entered into a public-private partnership with the developer. They're in site planning for the initial Phase 1, which is slated to include approximately 300 multifamily units and about 10,000 square feet of commercial space along Main Street. This beautiful building was demolished in late spring, early summer, the old Butterball Turkey Factory. Whippy Brewing opened in September, I believe it was Labor Day, and they've enjoyed tremendous success. I think they're one of probably the best examples of two owners that really have the understanding of using social media to really attract and be a destination. I think they had over 2,000 visitors that opening weekend. And we also continue to see planning and improvements for the focus on South Main, including the District Park and the Main Street Bridge, which has rendering on the bottom there. In terms of kind of our financial summary, which is highlighted in your report, so we started the year with a balance of about $258,000. Revenue, since the property hasn't generated increment yet, there's really been no increment generated. The only revenue is about $1,500 from interest earnings on that initial balance. We had expenditures, about $60,000, that was a transfer to the City of General Fund for the CFP debt repayment. And about $23,000 was for other associated costs for the Twin Peaks Mall redevelopment, which included some engineering consulting services, some wages for our in-house owners' representative as part of the approval process for the site plan, and as well as a building inspection, plan review consultant in terms of helping approve the building plans as part of Village of the Peaks. And my last slide is kind of looking ahead to 2016, while we're five months into 2016, but in terms of what we're planning to do this year. One of the key things is really based on the direction that council provided back in November is continue to plan for the new transit-oriented development at the First and Main Transit Center. It's within our Southeast Longmont urban area, and a portion is also within the DDA. And so, you know, we've hired a consultant to assist us with that process, and we're in the midst of evaluations about the implementation of the First and Main, and we plan to come back hopefully within a month or two with some updates on that one. We expect commencement of construction of South Main Station beginning by end of the year, as well as the completion of Village of the Peaks with the opening of the Sam's Club in early summer, I believe, and Whole Foods by December. In terms of the Envision Longmont, you know, the Envision Longmont has an inclusion of these redevelopment-focused areas. This includes the two urban areas, the Twin Peaks Mall, which is part of the Hoover Road focus area, and the Sugar Mill, which is part of the Sugar Mill focus area. So we'll continue to work with our planning staff in terms of implementation of the strategies associated with Envision Longmont. We also continue to have discussions with the Sugar Mill property owner and developers. And I think because of the hospital, there's been, I would say, a pretty strong uptick in activity about, in terms of looking at reinvestment in this part of town. You know, it's only, I think, less than a mile away, and so we're continuing to work closely with the existing owner of the Sugar Mill to hopefully facilitate a redevelopment project that, you know, would hopefully start in the near term. I mean, we've always envisioned the Sugar Mill as more of a longer-term opportunity, but I think because of this new development activity, we're starting to see some increased interest from various representatives, from the existing owner, as well as developers. And we'll also continue to, you know, to work on the focus on South Main and the infrastructure and public space improvements down there that really will help amenitize this part of town in terms of being an attraction for new investment for Longmont. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. David, thanks. This is a great update. I'm kind of curious as to what's happening with the Brian Baer's development. Where are we? Are we on schedule with that?
Mayor, councilmember Peck. So yes, I mean, so the South Main Station Phase 1, which includes the 150 Main, is currently in site plan review. You know, he's had some cost, project costs that helped him, that he's had to look at redesigning his project as well. And so we're continuing to work closely with him in terms of updates to that. Sure, he'll, you know, plan to come to give an update to you as well.
Okay.
But it's still moving along. Maybe Harold would want to jump in as well.
Yes, so we definitely are engaged in the conversation. I know Brian's indicated that there's been some, I guess, scheduling issues that have come into play. He talked about that with council before. Based on the conversation I had with David this morning, actually, we've scheduled a meeting for tomorrow so I can sit down and have a conversation and understand what's going on and see really what his perspective is, what our perspective is, based on the existing agreement, and trying to pull all that together.
Well, I'd just like to make a couple of comments. First off, I really like Whippy Brewing, you know, we actually have some of their beer at our restaurant. And those guys are social media gurus. I mean, they really know how to build social capital quickly in this community. So I think they're a big asset to the downtown and this project. So I appreciate all that you've done to help them get into business, and I think that they're great players. You know, the other thing is, I've been really surprised, you know, going down to like on a rainy Monday night or Wednesday night to a movie, bad weather, just how packed the parking lot is at Village of the Peaks. And then the restaurants seem to have a lot of people, and people are getting out even in the snow and sleet. And, you know, there's just a real good buzz about that project. And I'm really confident that it's going to be very, very successful in the end when we start to get all the sales tax, TIF, and the property tax TIF that is projected for that. I think we're going to be in good shape. So thanks for all the hard work that everybody's done on that project. Anybody else have any comments? All right, well, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, your next study session item will be presented by Regal Leal. Our public information officer will be presenting the 2016 Customer Satisfaction Survey.
Hello, Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Regal Leal. I'm the city's public information officer, and I'm going to talk to you about the 2016 Customer Satisfaction Survey. The survey has been conducted in some form or another since 1996. And currently, the satisfaction survey is done every two years, every even-numbered year. The survey acts as kind of a report card for residents to gauge and to register their satisfaction levels with city services. And the city's been working with the National Research Center for a number of years to conduct this survey. They're a nationally renowned company that's based in Boulder. And the core survey questions have not changed very much for the last 20 years since 96. And the advantage to that is that we can create a baseline for what's to come after that. So we can measure and compare today's results with past results, see where we've been, see where we're going. So it's pretty advantageous to have that consistency running throughout the survey. In addition to the core questions that we ask every time, the council has the option of adding additional questions. We've called them policy questions in the past, but this is an opportunity for you to amend or add questions typically to the end of the survey. And in your council communication, we've listed several suggestions for you to consider. These suggestions have come from various staff throughout the city, and I'll point out a couple of them for you. Staff is suggesting that council might be interested in asking the residents of Longmont about their level of support for an aquatics and ice facility. That's something for you to consider. Another recommended or suggested topic is to ask a question about train noise. We actually asked a question about this several years ago, and it might be interesting to gauge to see what has changed from then to now. Another suggestion on the list here is about our drinking water systems and the Windy Gap Filling Project. So you may want to ask residents about those issues as well. Another topic for consideration is revenue increases, so sales tax increase basically to see if there's any appetite for that by the voters of Longmont, especially considering the aging city facilities that we have. That may be something that the city might consider doing, and you may want to gauge support for that. Another suggestion includes affordable housing, another about human service needs. And then if the council just wants to add their own questions, that's certainly an option available to you. So with all that said, I have two basic questions. The first one being, do you want to conduct the survey this year in 2016? And the second question being, if you do want to conduct that survey, do you want to add any additions? to add any additional questions?
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think we should always do a survey. I think it's good information for us to have. On the suggested topics that you have listed, in particular interest to me would be the Human Service Needs Assessment. I would like to see a question like that. And the affordable housing question. Another question that came to mind for me was a question about whether they wanted to see retail marijuana stores within the city limits of Longmont. As far as the Windy Gap Filling Project, that's pretty complicated to ask in a survey question, and we've kind of already talked about it, so I'm not so hot on that question. A general sales tax increase question, if you can tie it to something like aquatics and ice, or some, something, if you can tie that tax increase to something people want, that might be a good, a good question as well. But those are my thoughts on it. We should always, I think, do the survey, and those would be my suggestions for additional questions.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would echo some of the things that Councilmember Finley said. What we are really needing, in my opinion, in Longmont as far as housing, is workforce housing, so that we can attract employment, employers to, and they can have people in Longmont that are ready to go to work. That has to be affordable, so where do you draw the line between, I think their last task force was called Workforce Housing Task Force versus Affordable Housing Task Force, so I don't know what to call it, but I think we need to make a, an effort to make sure that we're wanting to provide for our workforce as well as our less fortunate. It's a dual, it's a two-step need in our community for those at the low end and those that have pretty good jobs that still can't afford to live here, like teachers, firefighters, policemen. So, along with that, we have to understand that we have an issue coming forward in the next 10 years or so about our drinking water systems, and we need to gauge some support. I like that question. Being able to frame it around the need of a dependable water supply and being able to deliver it to your house, I think everybody wants their water. And then train noise is a perennial, train noise thing is always a good one, and that's all I have right now. Thanks.
Well, I got a couple of thoughts. You know, one is, you know, there's a lot of people concerned about train horn noise, but I guess it's a good question, but are people willing to pay to solve it with sales tax or whatever, or is it street sales tax to eliminate the train horns with quiet zones? I don't think, you know, the Windy Gap project, to me, Windy Gap is, you know, we're buying this bucket. We've already owned the water rights. That's been settled. We paid for, you know, to fill the bucket. Now we're just paying for the bucket. I think that's more of a council question. You know, I do think that there's some validity to maybe if we could get really low bond rates to, you know, maybe reconsider the advantages and disadvantages. You know, we made a decision to cash finance based on 5% bond rate, but, you know, it could be we could get 2.5% bond rate, and that might have led us to a different decision, so I don't know if that's, to me, that's not all that important, something to consider. Let's see what else. Now, I'll let someone else jump in, it'll probably come back to me. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. For the train horn noise, rather than a survey question as to what we should do about it, perhaps the survey question could be, did you know that you can make comments on the FRA survey that they are extending through June? Because when I was in Washington and talked to FRA, they really want input on that. So I don't really know what the website is, but probably Phil Greenwald knows what it is. So perhaps phrasing the question that way would be good. The other thing, I think a good question would be, if the city and county no longer bought the fare box for the buses, would you be willing, how, how willing would you be to continue to take the bus? Or would that, would you be willing to pay? I don't know how you would phrase it, but I'm kind of curious if people have gotten used to taking the bus, they like it, and they would be willing to pay for it if we didn't buy the, if it wasn't free. And then if there could be some input, and this is a tricky one, on, do you have any suggestions on how the city should address homelessness or street people? I don't know if that's a good, I personally would like to know, but if there's any input from council on that question, whether you think it's a good one or not, I'd appreciate it.
Councilmember Christensen.
I agree with what everybody else has said. My personal preference would be for, I agree with Councilman Moore that the affordable housing is a, is a crisis, and it's really something that we need to address, and it would be good for people to have some input on that. I also agree with Councilman Finley about the Human Needs Assessment, talking about exactly the question you've got here. Have you or members of your household had to reduce or go without basic needs in order to make ends meet? And I think that this would be, I think in many ways, this is, this survey's a good opportunity for us to educate and draw the connection between, here are the things that we'd like to have, but somebody has to pay for them. Are you willing to pay for them? You know, a $32 million ice rink and aquatics thing, would you prefer that over clean drinking water, for instance? And, you know, all the things, the train noise, the aquatics, the, all these things cost money. So if we draw the attention to the fact that if you would like this, how much would you be willing to pay for it? Or do you realize that this will cost so much for a person? That's what I'd like to see. I was also going to suggest that, you know, we've always mailed these out. We could also offer people, a broader number of people, because of the 3,000 people it's mailed to, how many actually send it back?
We get a return rate of around 25% or so, which is considered pretty good.
I know, for direct mail, it is.
Yeah.
But if you also give people an option of emailing it in or responding to a site, just as they did with envisioned Longmont, you might have a higher return rate and save a little bit of money. I mean, it's, you send out one postcard, and then you send out two mailings, and perhaps if you also gave them an email option or a survey, you know, a site like envisioned did, that would be a cost-saving.
And I think the survey has evolved over time to where we've considered that in the past and opted not to, but I think it's worth revisiting for sure. We'll ask the National Research Center for their recommendations on that.
Yeah, okay. Are they, these sent to the same people every time?
No, it's a random, it's a random mailing.
And it's randomized for different areas of the city so that we get that?
It's equal among all the wards.
Okay, that's a good thing to know. Is there any way we can see the actual wording of these?
And yes, you will see the actual wording before it ever goes out. So we will take your suggestions, we'll share them with National Research Center, we'll ask their assistants to wordsmith it, bring it back to you, and then you will have ultimate approval.
I'm sure they'll do a better job than we.
Yeah, they do a great job.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. And Mayor, could I add one thing before we move on? And just to address, you hit on a key thing, I think, about the money part. We've gotten pretty good in recent surveys of asking, you know, your level of support, then following up with, okay, if you really want to get rid of train noise, for example, how much are you willing to pay? Or are you willing to pay this much? We even get it more specific than that. We will give specific examples of how much it might cost to do certain things. And we, and a few years ago, we saw a great level of support for, you know, curtailing train noise, but when we followed up with the question of all the money it costs, the support drops a little bit. So that's not surprising. But I, but I think you're right. You're all right about making sure that people understand that aspect of what we're asking for.
Particularly when we are, we just raised water rates, and it's very painful. We don't want to keep raising rates on everything, but they have to understand why.
You bet. And then I just wanted to go back to your comments about the comment period on the train noise. So we have done a lot of advertising and marketing around that. So we've, you know, via social media, we have a webpage and a web post about that information as well. The Times Call wrote an article recently about it. They've contacted me recently, and I think they're planning on another one, as a matter of fact. So there is a lot of information out there about that. And we typically don't use the survey as a way to educate, so to speak, yeah. But, but I think you're on the mark about the question, and I should have brought the exact question with me, I didn't from a few years ago. But you'll, you'll get a chance to see it very specifically written, and if it's a question you like, then we'll go with it. If not, we can always tweak it.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, all good, all good questions in here. The one with the train noise, thank you, Regal, for saying what we do. Perhaps to piggyback off what Councilmember Peck has suggested, perhaps a little bit more, not only with the Times Call, but within city line itself, especially during that open, that open period, at least have something in every, something along those lines that you want to comment regarding train noise in every monthly city line until that comment period is up, might be a great way to get people to hit the federal transit authority. Windy Gap, again, I think that's kind of a tough one to try to squeeze into a, into a question. So that one I'm not too sure about, but the others, as far as the aquatics facility, the drinking water systems, you know, I know that's a big thing with Flint, Michigan going on right now, and another municipality, apparently, I want to say in Delaware or somewhere, they were having some issues with some tea, tea pipes. Anyway, what I would like to know is whether or not adding additional raw water storage, not so much drinking water systems, because once everyone just equates that to pipes. So going with increased revenues, are you, would you be willing to pay rehabilitation for aging city facilities? I think those are almost two in the same, whether it be drinking water systems, storm water systems, you know, streets, you name it. Those could be several different things with a gauge of 1 through 10, you know, what's the highest for you? Affordable housing, yes, the Human Service Needs Assessment, I think, needs to be done. With, lastly, the allowing people to do the survey online. I have no problem with that, but there needs to be a code that folks can use for one-time purpose. And once that code is used, then it just, yeah, multiple, multiple people taking the survey multiple times.
Vote early and vote often.
Yeah, exactly. It does not really work well for a good survey, so I look forward to seeing the questions and then having a little bit more discussion later. Thanks.
I did remember one thing, you know, we had such a severe cold winter where we had a big snowstorm, and then we had cold weather for like three straight weeks, and I got all these emails, can't we clear the side streets? And, you know, I don't know if that was just an outlier year, it was the worst winter that I've seen since I've lived here in terms of keeping the streets because of that cold spell. But, you know, maybe perhaps another, if we're looking for another question, might be, are people willing to spend more money on snow removal? Because, you know, we have the capability, if we want to spend a lot of money, we can do it if that's important to people. But, you know, it's not important to me because I've never had any problem getting around town with either front wheel drive or whatnot, but some people, it really bothers them, and maybe if that's a question, we might want to consider putting on a survey, perhaps.
Great. So let me just remind you that with this number of questions, like, and seven.
Yeah, we may have to tailor them down at some point.
Well, at this point, you don't have to pare them down. What we're going to do is wordsmith them with the help from the National Research Center. We'll see how much fits on the actual page. So I'm guessing that we're going to have to add another page to the survey with the number of questions you've asked for. So typically, we produce a five-page survey with limited questions from the council. I'm guessing we're going to have to add another page with the number of questions you're suggesting. And just so you know, that the price of the survey goes from about $27,000 to about $29 for that extra page. And then if we're going to ask them about the web component, there may be some additional costs to administer that. I don't know how much that would be, but I just wanted to make you aware that we can do what you're suggesting and.
It might cost more.
There's an additional cost to it, so how much, how willing are you to support that is the question for the council.
Right. Well, I think we can probably, you know, make a decision once Brian's back as to what's the most important questions, and maybe pare the questions down once we see them. We don't have to make a decision tonight, but I think.
No.
Put a shopping list of questions, and we can probably easily pare them down to three.
And we will. We'll give you a good indication of what that's going to look like.
Okay.
We'll wordsmith them, we'll put them on the page, we'll bring it back, you get a look at it.
All right.
All right? And so the timeline was also attached to your council communication, but let me just remind you that we'd like to initiate mailing the materials right around June 10th, and the survey would continue through about June 24th. The reporting by NRC would happen around August, and then they will come back to the council in September with a final report. So that's the projected timeline for now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, I guess we got a legislative update, don't we?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to talk a little bit about Senate Bill 194. So this bill dropped on the, last Tuesday, when we were having our council meeting, it had actually dropped just the day before, so too late to hit the council deadlines. But since then, I sent you all an email showing you what Senate Bill 194 does. It's the Regional Transportation Development Act, and is sort of a tax increment financing tool. And what it would do is, it would say that if there's an area that is underdeveloped through either retail, commercial, essentially, and it's underdeveloped because of the lack of transportation, that we as a municipality or counties could apply to the state to turn it into a regional transportation district. And so what that might look like, I recognize that naming conventions are a little familiar, but this is a different thing. And so essentially, what would happen is that you would petition, that we would petition the state to say, could we use the state sales tax increment, bond against it, to be able to provide some of the transportation, roads, bridges, park and rides, those types of things, in order to facilitate that development. So it's sort of the tax increment financing tool, but it's, it is pledging state sales tax with their permission in order to further transportation projects. And so City and County of Broomfield is sponsoring this legislation through all sorts of, lots of crazy reasons, and it got introduced late, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. I think that City Attorney May has mentioned that we have to suspend some rules if you do like to take a position on this bill at this time, but I'd be happy to answer questions first, and then he can walk you through that.
Councilmember Finley.
I don't have any questions. I'd like to suspend the rules and make a motion that we support the bill.
All right, that's been moved and seconded.
Mayor and council, Eugene May, City Attorney. So Council Rule of Procedure 25B says, at a study session, council can't take any official or final action. I think taking a position on a piece of legislation has positioned the city, and therefore would require suspending that rule. I think procedurally, it'd be cleaner if you took a vote whether or not to suspend the rule, then vote on the substantive matter.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we suspend the rules and procedures. Okay, let's vote on that. And that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Bagley absent. Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to move that we support this Senate Bill 194.
All right, that's been moved and seconded by Paulie Christensen, or Councilmember Christensen. Sorry. Councilmember Moore? Oh, do you want to turn yours off then? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'll vote for this, it's just that it's RTD. It's just that it's RTD.
So Councilmember Santos, I'm pretty sure that it will not be mistaken for the RTD. No way.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we've got a motion. It's been seconded. Let's vote. And that passes six to zero with Councilmember Bagley absent. All right, now it's time for, Councilmember Moore?
I'd just like to mention, I believe that to be eligible for this type of financing, you need to be along a state highway and 287 is a prime choice, so I think that this could benefit Longmont in the long run.
All right. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. This Sunday is Mother's Day. Just reminding you all to thank your mother or you wouldn't be here. Business of the week is the flower bin because at Mother's Day, you can plant your annuals and your perennials because it's not going to freeze anymore. That's what my mom told me and I always believed it. So go to the flower bin, buy some flowers. They're located at Nelson and Sunset. And even if you're not buying flowers, you can buy birdbaths and trellises and benches and it's just a nice place to go on Mother's Day. Also, Village at the Peaks is having a Mother's Day concert, I believe, on Sunday. Might be a fun thing to go to. I know they're giving out gift bags to the first 500 mothers there, so check that out too.
Wow. Councilmember Beck?
Thank you. I have, something was brought to my attention about the water rates that I would like some input on. HOAs are having a problem with the water rates because even though the individual homeowners are going to have their water rates raised, the HOA with all the green areas that they have to keep up, they already have their budgets in place. And one in particular told me that the rates were going to raise it by like $1,300 a year for them. So I am wondering, well, what I would really like is some incentives to be brought to us to pass on for maybe some zero scapeing, for if the city can give some incentives for zero scapeing for these HOAs to cut down on their water bill and maybe some other incentives before we vote on this that can be brought to, for just the elderly and low-income people other than what is already in effect, if we can work on that and bring that back so that I can possibly pass that on to these HOAs. That would be great.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Councilmember Peck's correct. Our HOA will have an impact of at least $10,000 or $15,000 because we irrigate about 12 acres. But I believe that the current water, the 21% rate increases will not impact the current budgets because we already programmed a 9% rate increase into this and our HOA actually budgeted that 9% increase this year. So next year's budgets will definitely be impacted. So if that's the route council takes, by the way.
Will the HOA's budget for next year during 2016? They don't, okay. All right, we'll take that offline. I mean, I love zero scape, but my yard's zero scape. I love that artificial grass. That's probably why we only use 40 gallons per person per day. You know, it does save water, but, you know, we did all of ours without any incentives because I hate mowing grass. Councilmember Beck?
Mayor Coombs, don't you take showers at your fitness center?
Mostly I take, I do both.
I would also like to thank Dan Wolfherd. He gave an incredible tour to me and my husband and Councilwoman Christensen of all of our open spaces and it was amazing. He's a great steward of our land. We saw a herd of deer, yellow-headed blackbirds, eagles, osprey. It was great. And I would just like to advise any staff or council people who have not gone on that tour, it's well worth it to know what a great city we have as far as our spaces and wildlife.
Okay. I don't see any other council members, so City Manager, any comments?
Mayor and council, I did want, there was a comment regarding Sunset Bridge and staff communication. The information on that is actually, you will receive that tomorrow in your packet based on the work that we've done to assess that situation. I know they've had a conversation with an individual or individuals from that neighborhood. So anyway, that will be coming out in the council information packet about the approach that we plan to take as we open Sunset Bridge.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Oh, I did want the public to know that the reason why Councilmember Bagley was not here is because he had to, you know, watch his daughter sing at a concert tonight. So I think that was a very good use of his time because, you know, we all have families and other obligations too, and he's missed several of her concerts before and she's a senior, so I admire that he was able to make his priorities straight because sometimes our most important job is being a good father. Councilmember...
Yeah.
Councilmember Santos?
Well, you know, and I would agree with that 100%, Mayor. Today was my daughter's first softball game that she ever played in, but I came to our meeting and stuck it out. So sometimes, unfortunately, these obligations we have as an elected official makes us stay and do the people's business.
But our children understand. Councilmember, or excuse me, City Attorney Eugene May, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned. All right, this meeting is adjourned.